Good evening. This is the August 21st, 2019 meeting of the East Long Meadow Town Council. I'll open the meeting now with a pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And during our moment of silence, we ask that we keep our first responders as well as our servicemen and women around the globe in your thoughts. Before we begin our agenda this evening, I want to make a comment on behalf of our fire chief, Paul Morissette. Many of the residents in town today shortly before four o'clock probably noticed a consistent boom, if you will. Some thought it to be thunder, but I want to let all of our residents know that earlier today, there was a chemical spill in the chemistry lab at East Long Meadow High School, an accident, of course, as teachers were preparing for the upcoming school year next week. And the fire department, as well as our police hazmat, and the state police bomb squad naturally were all called to the scene. And it was determined by the state police bomb squad that to safely remove the substance from the property, the best way to resolve the situation, as well as an opportunity for the bomb squad to take advantage of some practice, they took part in what is called a controlled detonation to resolve the volatility of the chemical substance, as well as to make sure that there would not be any other further repercussions from that. So again, there is no danger to any residents. The substance has been safely taken care of by all of the bomb squad protocols, and hopefully this does not occur again. But as it relates to our first responders, we're happy to know that all forces came together this afternoon for a safe and happy outcome. Moving on, two announcements made in accordance with Mass. General Law. This meeting is being audiotaped and videotaped. If there is anyone in the audience doing the same, please identify. And I don't see anyone this evening, so we can move forward. There are no public comments this evening, council comments. Moving on to approval of minutes. In your packet, you have the August 6th, 2019 open session minutes. If you look those over and suggest any changes or corrections, additions, deletions, and if so, and if not, I will entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept the August 6th, 2019 open session minutes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Motion passes unanimously, five to zero. Also in your packet are the August 13th, 2019 open session minutes, and the same will apply if you have any corrections or comments you'd like to make about those. Would you please note that now? Otherwise, in the absence of any, I will entertain a motion to accept the August 13th meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion's been made.
So moved.
So moved, seconded.
Seconded.
You jumped fast. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the August 16th, 2019 open session minutes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. That motion passes as well. We have no items under communication, correspondence, and announcements, as well as no public hearing, no orders of the day. However, what we really are here for this evening is, under old business, the selection of an agency to conduct the professional search for a permanent town manager. I reached out, as well as Mr. Kane, to three agencies in Massachusetts and New Hampshire who have a known history of doing public officer professional searches, and asked if each would please submit a proposal to do a town manager recruitment. We have those proposals in front of us this evening, and I will open the floor for comments and any discussion you'd like to have at this time.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Just to elaborate on what you just stated, I had conversations earlier in the week with the Collins Center. I followed up with emails, copied President Hill on those, the reaching out and who I actually contacted. And secondly, I went to, is it Paradigm?
Paradigm, Community Paradigm Associates.
And had long conversations with them that ended today, and I think we're all going to feel that both these companies are very capable of doing what the task is at hand. It's just going to be a gut feeling on what we want to do as a group, who we feel more comfortable going, and I'm sure we're all going to take into consideration the cost of this, but maybe you can elaborate on that a little bit more.
I had a lengthy conversation with the principal owner of Community Paradigm Associates last week to learn a little bit more about his company. Just by way of background, they're a relatively new agency. They've been in business since 2012 or '13, six years or so. The principal owner himself is a former manager of the city of Lowell and took them through the verge of receivership into solvency. I guess that would be his most notable claim to fame when he was a town manager. The folks on his staff have themselves served as town managers or town administrators in their professional careers, and as did the Collins Center and Municipal Resources, Inc. from southern New Hampshire. All three agencies included a lengthy list of locations and communities where they have done work and have had successful outcomes. I did not have the opportunity to speak with the Collins Center. My familiarity with them is from the search they conducted for us three years ago, nor did I have an opportunity to speak with the Municipal Resources Incorporated. I would concur with Mike that all three proposals are parallel, for the most part, in what they offer to do. It's a pretty standard scope of work in that kind of industry. To me, they differ most in the price. They're within, I mean, they're not all spread all over the board, but clearly there is one who proposes to do the search for the least amount of money. There's two pieces to the cost. One, the fee for the professional service, and secondly, the cost of advertising, which is borne directly by the town. And guidance would be given on how to do that advertising, but the town would be separately invoiced for that. So that's my impression. I'm struck by the fact that this agency, the folks on the ground doing the recruitment have all sat in that similar chair in their history, and so have seen it from the other side of the desk, and probably have a good feel for what each particular client is looking for.
I'd just like to add one other piece, too, because I had dialogue with both companies. Working with the Collins Center, I was, you know, most of my conversations took place with salespeople that work for the Collins Center that aggressively are, you know, going after these contracts. What I did like about talking with Paradigm was I was speaking to the owner of the company, and he seemed very aggressive and very interested in wanting to do work for us, and said he would not be sending employees out here. That would not be his plan at this point in time. But he'd be coming out himself, wanted to meet our council, and kind of walk us through the whole phase. So having the owner of a company versus a salesperson just made it feel a little bit more personable, so.
Through the chair.
Yes. Mr. Page.
When I looked at the three proposals, yes, there was slight difference in the cost. I think it's so minor that you could pick any one of them, I don't think the price is going to make a difference. It's not like one was out of the ballpark and the other two were close. They were all three relative close. Being a past member of the charter, I did get to work with the Collins Center hand-in-hand for over a year. I will say, when we did that, Mike Ward was the one that came out and met with us to begin with, and then Tanya took over. I find out now that Mike is now pretty much in charge of the Collins Center and running everything. I did look at their website. They have increased the number of people on their staff dramatically from when the charter was done. It's almost double the number of employees that they now have, which, to me, is extremely important, because if one goes on vacation, there's more people to take over. But looking at just the proposals, I think any one of the companies, I mean, like I said, having a track record with Collins, I like the fact that they've worked with the town multiple times now. They pretty much already have a feel for what the town's looking for. We already have a profile of the town and all with them. I think that gave them a little bit of a leg up, in my opinion. But again, I think all three companies look fantastic.
Anyone else?
Yeah, through the chair. So I've had a very positive experience with the Collins Center as well. They have me listed as one of the references, and I have been a reference of theirs, I think, two or three times. I, again, I don't mind necessarily going with somebody different. I think the only, although I like what I've seen with the Collins Center, and I've had very positive interactions, I don't know if we would end up with Mary again, but Tom, you were part of that committee, other than getting caught in traffic a couple of times coming out here. I mean, she was here every time, holding her hand, guiding us through. But there is, what's swaying me just a little bit to consider others is that, you know, it's good and bad to piggyback off of what Long Meadow is doing, because they are two steps ahead of us right now in the search process. And Tom, you said that before the meeting, they're only going to take one candidate. They can't take eight candidates. And so if there's properly vetted people that are willing to work in this particular geographical area, and they've already been vetted and they're being handed to them, you know, to screen and for final interviews and things like that, then in some ways, they're a little bit ahead of the game. Not to say that the Collins Center can't scale up quickly and start getting us information, but each of them, even though we do our own advertising, there's already an existing pool there, if that makes sense.
Yes.
But each of these groups already have people that they're in contact with. They've placed them for an interview. They haven't received it, but they're a very good viable candidate, so they're still available. They already know them, and they've already vetted them, you know, background screenings and all the necessary requirements that are done. So, you know, that just gave me a little bit of pause to think about that that might be an advantage to us. I don't see it being a disadvantage, because the person they select may not have been the person we would have selected anyhow, personality reasons, the right fit, cultural fit, whatever, you know. So I don't think there's a loss there, but then there's still a bunch of viable candidates. So this is my two cents, but we're definitely not going to go wrong if we go with the Collins Center. They're a known commodity. Ralph's had positive experience with them on the charter. I've had positive experience with the search committee. Tom was part of that as well, so.
I will note that with Community Paradigm, as you said, Joe, they are in the midst of Long Meadow's professional search for a manager. The chair of the select board herself told me they anticipate, or they're hopeful that they will identify a new manager by the first part of October. Paradigm has also just concluded a search for Palmer. I'm not certain if it's a manager there or an administrator.
Manager.
It's a manager, okay.
No administrator, so.
Mm-hmm.
Administrator.
Okay, town administrator.
Did they change that? Because it was a town manager, so they must have went to an administrator instead of a manager. I knew Charlie Blanchard.
Yeah. My point was more, not so much the title, but that they're active in our neck of the woods, if you will, and so they are getting a pronounced understanding of the culture in western Mass. Clearly, all three have portfolios all over Massachusetts, New Hampshire, Vermont, you know, upper New England a little bit, some Connecticut, predominantly Massachusetts and New Hampshire.
Right.
So they, all three, bring some viable experience to the table. There's not one that, you know, clearly is separated in a weakness camp against the others. They're all three very good at what they do.
Kathy, did you or Mike get a sense of how they were planning on conducting the search? I know you were just describing a little bit prior to the meeting about what, like, did you, either you talk to them specifically about how would you come in here, what would you recommend in terms of, you know, community participation versus board participation?
I did at length last week. Once we, if we were to go with Paradigm, they would want to be present at the earliest council meeting to let the public know, as well as the council, how they envision going through it. Once they are in a kind of a brainstorming session with the council as to what do you see the goals and the mission of the town, what are your priorities, obviously, they will want to look at our strategic plan, our master plan, though it's still in much of an embryonic stage. They need to take up the temperature of the town and the progress it's made, particularly since we're a new form of government. But there'll be plenty of information available to any one of the three agencies in order to understand what our needs are. They will, secondly, do the same kind of think tank process with department heads in a separate meeting. They highly recommend, and I would very much agree, that they will set up a time for a public forum where folks will be, and we can probably use a council meeting or a public hearing situation to invite anyone in from the community who would like to be here to offer input. They will moderate the flow of conversation or allow us to do it. I mean, that part's negotiable, but they recommend that, and I think, even if we were handling this by ourselves, I would certainly recommend that we give the public an opportunity to be heard. From there, they will have enough on paper to develop the profile, and then to develop the job description and the qualifications. All of what goes in there will have been pulled from all of the comments that we, as a council or department heads make. There'll be specifics about the financials, you know, what are the benefit package opportunities, the price range, what are you looking for in terms of background experience and college education and so forth. That will go out, as I think, Joe, you said, it'll go into the standard industry journals, the trade journals that where you'd advertise, but as well, they, he talked about a very developed database where they already know these kind of folks exist out there in New England, and they will recruit them and say, hey, I've got something pretty desirable out in western Massachusetts. Is it something you want to be aware of? So they will recruit, as well as allow the folks out there who are waiting for vacancies to pop up and can just do the typical, oh, here's my resume, and go from there. At that point, we will need to form a screening committee, if you will. You did that with the Collins Center. How many folks did you put on that?
Five residents.
Five.
And myself.
Five, strictly residents, no council members?
Just me.
Okay. And so we will have to decide, they pretty much leave the composition of the screening committee up to the client. I'm putting words in their mouth, but I can't imagine them excluding residents from the screening committee, because to me, that would be foolhardy. In the meantime, 30 days or so will go by, and they will gather all of the applications and do the initial vetting, because obviously, in any search like this, there will be some candidates that truly don't have the requirements, so they will, you know, pare the list down and present eight to nine very strong, or what he calls viable candidates, and then work with the screening committee to work, interview, and pare that down to three, possibly four, four if the committee was at, you know, just couldn't come to consensus on it. But he would recommend three, and at that time, there would be public interviews, and then, you know, we would, prior to the interview, he, they, although I got the sense, as you might have pointed out, Mike, that he has people on his staff that will probably do the behind-the-scenes work, but he himself will be the one showing up for these meetings and helping us to develop questions and coaching us, much like what Mary did through the whole process.
My conversation with him really dovetails off exactly what you said, but part two was the direction that you took the conversation with, working with Long Meadow, already getting a feel for, you know, when they're going to be wrapping that up. And I do look at it like you. I look at it as an advantage. Both of these communities have subtle differences, but I was pretty excited hearing what they had to say, and that the owner himself would be coming out here. I found that interesting, and it was all good, so.
Through the chair.
Yes.
The only thing I noticed as a major difference on the three of them was Paradigm basically has a little script in here that says additional services, such as community forums and all, will be built additionally at an hourly basis. The other ones basically recommend that we do a community forum and stuff. So I think that's something where I don't have a problem with it. I just think we, if we're going to go with them, we have to say, okay, this is what we're willing to pay to do this, this, and this.
Yeah, it's a good point, Ralph, but we probably may only end up with like one community forum, but they're traveling from eastern Mass, you're going to pay travel expenses, but just so that we know upfront, and, you know, if that's who we choose to go with, then if you can just clarify that, and maybe, maybe they can, you know, the others have included it, can you include it, something like that, you know. But, yeah, no, it's a good, it's a good point, but we're probably only going to have like one of those events.
Right.
That would be, because everything else is going to be publicized anyhow, you know, there would be, so there's going to be complete transparency through the whole hiring process, and I just can't imagine why you would want more than one community event like that.
Again, from speaking with the chair of the select board in Long Meadow, they held one. She said it was not well-attended, but, you know, that could be for a really amount of reasons. I don't know the night, the date, or the circumstances, and she didn't see that as a downside. However, she said we just felt we would just do the one.
Yep.
We're looking at an approximate 14-week duration of the scope of work, so, and I would think, again, since all three companies are pretty much parallel in how they do their job, September, October, so we're well into the December timeframe again.
Yep. You're about, you know, the first term of acting.
Right.
But that's what we expected anyhow.
We expected that.
So assuming that we come to a consensus tonight, well, we will, there's five of us, so there's, it's an odd number, so we're not going to have a tie. And then, so we have our next meeting on September 10th.
10th.
So I would expect that they would attend that, and so you would execute, you would negotiate and execute a contract prior to that.
Prior to that.
Then they would attend that.
I'm looking at Mr. Florence, because my recollection, when we were dealing with items in the summer, would be to say to people, we have you all covered for September 10th. And if I'm not mistaken, that might be a very heavy agenda.
It looks like it right now.
So we'd have to go to September 24th.
I mean, if you want to fit it in.
Or if we have to fit it in, if, and if there are.
Start a half hour early. I wouldn't, I mean.
Well, that's our other option. We could start early. We did that during budget season.
Yeah, I'd like to see that, like Joe mentioned.
Yeah, I wouldn't.
Because we're at the end of October then.
I don't want to put it off.
I mean, September. And then we'd be well into early January.
We're going to back up on holidays.
Yeah.
I don't.
And then we will be already in the beginning phases of budget, and that is not a ball that we want to drop.
Yes.
That is critical.
I did talk to him about some of his meetings and ongoing business with Long Meadow, and as we know, it is ongoing, and he said that maybe, you know, based on our schedule and his schedule, while he's in the area, if we needed a little bit more time or an extra meeting or such, that it would be very easy to do, being only a couple of miles over the line, so.
Well, back on through the chair would be, I mean, I agree with Joe and Ralph in some ways with regards to their comments, and I'm all for streamlining this process. And if we can piggyback onto Long Meadow, they already have, my understanding again in discussions, they already have 10 candidates that they've forwarded to Long Meadow for review. As Joe pointed out, they're going to hire one of them that's a fit for their community and may not be a fit for ours. So there's nine other vetted candidates already, which may save us time and money, so.
And I do want our public to understand that, as much as we're touting the parallelism here, we also, I want to make clear that we are a distinct community unto ourselves, and I think the folks in Long Meadow would say the very same. So I don't know what they're looking for. I don't know the expectations they've placed on this successful candidate, or the salary range, or the benefits package. And as we know, the person that we choose has to be a good fit chemistry-wise, and we have to feel comfortable that they will be able to move seamlessly into the culture of the community. So I want to make sure that our viewing public understands that we are not saying that Long Meadow is doing the work and we can piggyback and we'll have a manager because they, you know, already capitalized on the footwork. It's not that at all.
That wasn't it.
No, I know you weren't, but I, you know, sometimes you repeat a community's name multiple times, people start to think, wait, wait a minute, we're not them, and they're not us.
Right, and I'm sure they'll bring other candidates forward as well.
Of course.
During the advertising of this position. One thing that is not clear to me is there's two pieces. One is the actual resume writing, and I think that might be helpful, since they seem to have a number of, or a lot of experience in helping to write. in helping to write a advertising, if you would.
Yes, oh, they're going to do that for us.
Right.
Do you mean job description?
Yeah, job description.
Yes, they will do that.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, we, to some degree, we write that, but I think they'd be very helpful in that approach as well, because in my opinion, I think the last process, you know, could have been better. But I think with the last, through the chair, I think through the last process, I had the advantage today to be able to read the description of what we were looking for and I think it's a heck of a start and I think some modifications to it-
Of course.
-as we go forwards and we're two-thirds of the way there.
Yeah.
The other piece that I wanted to mention is that through some recent hiring practices that we all have been aware of, the one piece that I don't see, and I haven't looked at the Collins Center in detail because we just got that this afternoon, but it appears that they're not using social media to do any kind of vetting of candidates. And to me, I think that's an important part of any new hiring practice is to not just do core checks and background checks and references, but to search a lot of these social media sites, which a lot of companies do today, to see what this person has posted or what they've been doing and what, it tells you a lot about the person, in my opinion.
I think that's something we can simply bring up to whoever we choose to say, we, you know, do you do it and-
I would, I would say that that's our responsibility.
Right.
I mean, I did that on every candidate that we interviewed. That's just common practice. I mean, you'd be crazy not to, it's available, it's public information. You know, you should be doing that. That would be a wise business practice. But also, you know, they'll write a legally compliant, you know, job description and get it out there. I mean, that's the part that we need them for since we're kind of sends HR department, so, you know, but no, that's, you know, and they've vetted basic references and then they're, then they were required to do the background screenings, but everything else after that, when they give you like finalists, we should, and I remember kind of doing that collaboratively as a group, is talking about information and things that we found and looked at and what interested us on a candidate and what didn't, and then we went into the interview process and then we rated each candidate and then we collaboratively discussed what we liked and didn't like about candidates so that it was kind of fresh in our mind. And we did have a consistent question process for all the people that we interviewed so that we could rate them against each other. You know, it's kind of boring for the people that are doing it, you know, you're asking essentially the same question to each candidate, each resident was asking the same, you know, question bank, but we had to do it that way, otherwise you can't-
That's the only way you can standardize it.
You have to keep it on a level playing field.
I know, but, you know, when we were doing it, we, you know, ours tend to be more conversational because one question will take you in a different path.
Right.
But you have a little less ability to do that in this environment, but it's still at the end, you know, you hope to get a good indication of the value systems of people and if there's crazy posts or things that you find, then you probably shouldn't be interviewing that person to begin with, they shouldn't be a finalist, if, they shouldn't have made it that far at that point. So, I don't think that'll be a problem.
No.
And I wouldn't ask them to do that because they, they might look at something or interpret something different than we would as a group.
Than we would, that's very true. Good point.
I think that's our responsibility. So, I mean, it sounds kind of like, I mean, you two have to deal with the contractual part and getting things in motion. It seems like you guys are very comfortable, I'm not putting words in your mouth, but it seems like you're both comfortable with Paradigm?
You can put those words in my mouth. I am, I am, and that is not to the exclusion of the Collins Center or municipal resources. I got a good feeling in talking to the principal owner, Bernie Lynch.
And I-
Very flexible and is in discussions, it seemed very amiable on the phone.
So, are we ready for a motion?
I just want to add, I had three conversations. I talked to Tom today, I talked to you as well and I spoke with you, Kathy. No offense, Ralph, but I know what you were doing today. And at that point in time, I had no information from the Collins Center. As soon as it came in, I reached out to Tom and wanted those documents distributed so we had something to look at. But after that, I spent another 40 minutes on the, on the phone with the owner of Paradigm and just got a little bit more comfortable with what they're doing and that's where my level of comfort lies right now.
Fair enough, so.
So, through the chair, one of the things I noticed is with Paradigm, their suggested advertisement, the cost of it is probably the least of all three. I think that is one of the most important costs. I want to make sure that this job goes out to enough people and is advertised in enough ways. So, my thought would be is if the advertisement budget was a little bit more, I'm okay with that, as long as I know it's getting out to the correct people. I mean, we're talking a $400 or $500 difference between one agency and another, which doesn't sound like a lot, but that could be two or three more circulations.
Right.
So, I mean that-
I think we can make that clear.
And I think it's more important to make sure we have a huge group of people and not just a few select ones.
I walked away with a flexible feeling and they've already demonstrated that without to elaborate on it, but they're, they want to accommodate this town and they, I think they want their reputation when they're through. They want a happy community and, you know, that's, that's good marketing for themselves as well, for their next client, so.
Yep.
So, do we want to get a motion on the floor?
Sure. All right, I can make a motion to select Community Paradigm Associates LLC as the agency to conduct a professional search for the permanent town manager position.
So, move.
And seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to select Community Paradigm Associates as the agency to conduct professional search for the permanent town manager position. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Motion passes unanimously, five to zero.
So, do you need a second motion to negotiate with them for the final costs, advertising, stuff on that idea?
Do we, do we need that? Well, money is involved.
Well, we want it in place by then, so.
Yes, I would like to-
I mean, it couldn't hurt.
-start that ball next week. It doesn't hurt to have it.
The motion's not going to hurt, so.
Right.
It's better be safe than sorry.
So, you want a motion to-
Authorized.
-authorize the President, Vice President to enter into negotiations with Community Paradigm Associates LLC on any final contractual language and get that executed prior to the following meeting?
So, hold.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, what he said, to, all those in favor?
Aye.
Please say aye. Opposed, please say nay. That motion passes unanimously. Okay, so we have the beginning of our direction to move forward. We will undertake that and try to have a face-to-face with Mr. Lynch next week, perhaps. Our finance director is on vacation this week. When she comes back on Monday, I will show this contract to her so she is aware of the financials involved and can begin to set up a timeline for the, how the money has to go forward. There's a certain piece of the, of the contracted money that has to be paid when the advertisement is ready to go into the trade journals, but that's typical within any business, you're making a down payment and the rest is in installments. Okay, that would conclude our business for this evening. Unless there's something else that needs to come up, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned at 6:40 PM and we will be back here again on Tuesday, September 10th, 2019. Thank you and good evening.